I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting in order. It's Monday, October 1st, 2018. The time is 9:01. If everybody could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
We move down to approval amendments for September 17, 2018.
Second.
Have motion a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we'll go to presentations. Juvenile court security, Judge Dowling.
Kim Dowling, Judge, Circuit 2, and also as a part of that juvenile court. So I had talked with James about the fact that we've got some real security issues out at juvenile court. We held a meeting and the YOC participated in that meeting. They're going to do quite a few things to help us out. Nancy Marvin had gone out and done a security audit for us, and so she gave us about a page and a half list of things that the sheriff's office recommended. The sheriff does provide court security in the courtroom. There's a metal detector as people enter. Some of the things that we're changing, we're taking out some of the food and drink machines from the waiting room that parents are in. We're putting fobs or locks on doors that could lead into back hallways. So they're securing up some things that we need, putting some signage up, that sort of thing. The two most pressing things that we need right now are to have our metal detector serviced or replaced. Servicing could be cheaper if it can be serviced, but it is not properly working. People can walk through right now with a cellphone and it doesn't even beep. So we need that looked at and/or replaced, and then we also need an x-ray machine so that bags, purses, backpacks, those sort of things can be checked. Previously, we have not had even an off-duty officer or retired officer until this most recent person that was working to run those machines. But that was also part of the conversation with the YOC. They're going to hire a person with proper credentials to run the equipment and to do searches. We did recently have an incident in the courtroom where a juvenile had to be taken into custody, fought with the deputy. It was dicey. The judge was, magistrate Yonley, was a little bit concerned that he wasn't going to get it done. And at that time, we had no one else in the building who could have assisted him if that had gone badly. So by hiring someone who has the credentials to run those machines and be there to assist if someone needs assistance will be also of great assistance. The YOC is going to fund that position for the next year, and then the sheriff's going to see if we can get that position put into his budget for, in the next cycle. So I previously emailed you with costs, so we don't know what the cost would be of servicing. We have the name that the sheriff's office uses to service when they need it, but Nancy couldn't find what the cost was the last time they had to have that done. The cost of a new metal detector is going to be approximately $5,000. The cost of the x-ray machine will be between $18,000 and $22,000. Any questions?
Do you know how long that metal detector is that's currently there?
I don't. I was thinking about that as I was sitting here this morning. It was, I mean, it was there when I was practicing law, so it's been there a while. And I think that when they put it in there, it's used already, but I don't want to swear to that because I'm not positive.
$5,000 to buy a new one?
I think I'd rather just, I don't think you should get that serviced, yeah.
Okay.
Did they say how long a new one would take to get here?
I don't know. I just have to talk with Nancy about it, and she has the flyers and stuff of where we would order everything.
I think we could use some of the money out of the public safety. Do purchase this equipment.
I agree. How long would it take you to get it in, do you know?
I don't know.
I think we need to jump on today. Let's go ahead and get it ordered, and she's got the staff for a year at least. That's the problem.
I'll make a motion that we purchase the equipment.
Second.
Have motion a second. Commissioner, do you want to have any more further discussion? If not, keep the roll, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Okay, so we're talking about both pieces, right?
Both.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I'll get with Nancy, and then I'll talk with you all.
Training.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Association of Indiana Counties here to talk to us about tax refund, exchange, and compliance system.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is David Baller. I'm the executive director of the Association of Indiana Counties, and I've provided you with a couple of handouts I'll refer to in a minute, but I just want to give you an overall synopsis of this program that we developed with the Indiana General Assembly. Many of you may know for years, at least 10 years going back, the state has been intercepting on behalf of local governments, or on behalf of other units of government, state income taxes where if that person owed money, for instance, like child support, and that person was going to get a refund from their state income tax, the state would intercept that refund check and apply it towards the child support payments. So they've been doing that for child support, for other state agencies, and even for universities. Universities could participate in that program. For instance, if somebody had graduated from a state university and they owed money to the university and they're getting a state income tax refund, the university could sign up with the state and intercept that refund check and apply it towards the debt they owe to the university. So two years ago, we approached the General Assembly about the concept of if somebody owed a local government debt, such as property taxes, and they're getting a state income tax refund, could we be in a situation where we could intercept that state income tax refund and apply it towards their property taxes? And this program that we developed really doesn't apply just to property taxes. It applies to any debt owed to a public agency. So as we approached the Department of Revenue, they thought it was a good idea that it would be an efficient manner in which to collect public debt, but they did not want a system where they were hearing from 92 county treasurers, or 500 city and town clerk treasurers, or school corporations, or libraries. So what we did was approached the General Assembly and asked if we could create what we call the clearinghouse, and the General Assembly enacted a law in 2017 that said all the local units of government could go together and create this clearinghouse where they could submit their debts. Then the clearinghouse would scrub the data and submit one file to the Department of Revenue during the tax collection season, which is what we've done. And so we were able to work with the Department of Revenue, the Association of Indiana Counties has a contract with the state where we are that clearinghouse. So if people want to participate, they submit their debts to the clearinghouse, the clearinghouse scrubs the data, looks up the social security numbers, if we have to look up social security numbers to get the match, and then we submit that file starting in January, once a week through the end of the, you know, income tax season. So we had several counties interested last year. Three counties and one city, the city of Indianapolis, fully participated in the program. And I handed you a map. It's a two-sided map. You can see the 2018 Indiana participants. They're highlighted in red, and that does include the city of Indianapolis. So Marion County participated and the city of Indianapolis. And if you flip that over, you can see the counties that have signed MOUs with us this year, they're the ones in the dark red, and then the ones that are kind of the salmon or pink, they've at least expressed an interest where we've gone out and done a presentation where they have received the contract. So the way the program works, and I know I gave you a pretty significant handout here just so you'd have all the information you may need, but if you go to page four, there's a pretty nice flow chart as to how this system operates. Once the entity, and I'm not going to say county, because again, this is open to school corporations, citizen towns, counties, libraries, anybody, any agency that's owed a public debt, they will verify that that debt is owed to them, and they can submit the person's name to the clearinghouse. And the clearinghouse then, if we don't have the social security number that's submitted from the agency, the clearinghouse looks up the social security number. We have a service that we pay for that. And then they submit the file in the Department of Revenue's software standards, and it's a very high-tech encrypted methodology in which data is transferred back and forth between the clearinghouse and the state. And one of the safeguards we have in there is that the public agency never sees a social security number that they didn't submit. So, right, so on property taxes, we don't have social security numbers. They submit the file with the addresses. We go through the clearinghouse, and we have a fairly good success on the match rate because we have to know with nearly a 100% uncertainty that this is the person that owes that debt. And so once that match occurs, we submit the file to Department of Revenue. Revenue runs the file every week against income tax returns that have been submitted to be processed. And so if there's a match, that somebody's going to get a refund, they contact the clearinghouse and says there's a match. The clearinghouse notifies the local unit of government. The local unit of government, this is where they have a little bit of work on the behalf of the local unit, they have to submit a letter, send a letter to that taxpayer and say, "Your due is income tax refund. You owe us X amount of money. You have 30 days to come in and pay it or dispute it." And if there's a dispute, there's an official form they fill out, and that agency has to have a hearing with the taxpayer to determine if this really is the right person, or if somehow they've paid the debt and it just wasn't accounted for in the proper manner by the local unit. So they'll have the hearing. In Marion County, I think there were less than 10 official hearings out of the 1,500 names that were actually intercepted. So most people know they owe this debt, and the good thing for the local units is most people come in and pay as soon as they get that letter that says, "We're going to intercept your income tax refund." They'll come in and pay, and by doing that, they avoid any additional penalties or interest. So let's just say somebody, you know, the unit sends a letter out, the person doesn't respond, and after 30 days, then we notify Department of Revenue again, they didn't respond. So what happens is Revenue actually will capture their income tax refund and set it aside in the account that we call the Trex. At this point, the taxpayer does have two additional penalties that they have to pay for not coming in and paying. One is the Department of Revenue has a 15% administrative fee that they take out of that refund check for their work, and then they also take out a $20 fee for the clearinghouse for the work that we do as far as the search security lookup and all the software that we've worked with a software company to develop. So they take that out of the refund check, and then to participate, the unit will have to have an account with the state treasurer's office, the Trust Indiana account, which most units, a lot of units of government have that Trust Indiana account with the Department of Revenue. So once a week, after the 30 days is over, we'll get a notice that X amount of money has been intercepted. They'll send it to the Trust Indiana account. We'll send a file to Trust Indiana account that says, "Here's how you distribute that money you just received to each unit." And then after about two or three days, we'll notify the unit that you now are going to get an electronic funds transfer from Trust Indiana to the account that you designated, and then we'll send them a file to say, "The amount of money that was intercepted, this is how you apply that debt." And so it's very, you know, software-intensive, but it's a very efficient way to collect these old debts. And then the unit, you know, applies that to the debt. And if it's not enough to cover the full debt, the person still owes that money. And we've seen this work, you know, in these three counties that participated, the city of Indianapolis. It's been a very, very efficient and successful program, and really, in the long run, it's saving the taxpayer money because if you turn them over to a collection agency, they're adding 30% on probably, 25 to 30%, and then some additional penalties and interest on top of that. So it's completely voluntary program on behalf of units. We just think it's a very efficient way to collect this debt. It doesn't make sense for one unit of government to send money to somebody who owes another unit of government money when we could actually apply that money to the debt they owe at the local level. So I feel like we have plenty of safeguards in there. Again, the taxpayer has this 30-day opportunity to come in and indicate they don't owe the money, or they can convince the unit they have a hardship, and the unit cannot intercept that refund. But I would say the most successful thing about the program is the voluntary payments that get made. And again, the DOR doesn't take their fee on the voluntary payments, and we don't charge a fee for the voluntary payments. We did have a couple situations, I think six out of Marion County, where the person went all the way through the process, intercepted the money, and they came in after the 30 days appeal period was over, and in some situations, I think they proved to the county that they really didn't owe the money, and the county went ahead and refunded their money and refunded the DOR fee. So that's the only type of risk I see on behalf of the local units, is if you want to refund somebody's money after the 30-day period is over, you would refund that, and again, it would be up to the unit to determine if they're going to refund the DOR fee because really the taxpayer should have come in beforehand. Some of the really good successes we've seen is with mobile homes where oftentimes people will sell a mobile home and the new person doesn't record the title. And so we continue, the county continues to send tax bills to the mobile homeowner we have on record, and that oftentimes that mobile homeowner throws the record away, or throws the invoice away because they feel like they don't owe it. Well, then now, when this happens, they come in and they've been able to prove that they've actually sold the mobile home to somebody else who didn't file the paperwork correctly, so the county would relieve that person of that debt and apply that debt to the new owner who should have been paying it all along. And that's kind of the program in a nutshell. Again, the state's been doing this for over a decade for child support, for universities. We just decided to get in on the program, and DOR's been great to work with, again, because they only get one file per week from all local units of government, so we've kind of taken on that burden at the association. Again, be happy to answer, you know, any questions anyone may have about the program. Completely voluntary. I mean, nobody has to use the burden if they don't want to, but the counties that have signed up in the city of Indianapolis, they're very pleased with it, and, or, you know, if anybody has any questions, they can, we could give them the contact number for the, those three counties or the city of Indianapolis. City of Indianapolis really was happy because they have a centralized debt collection agency that works on behalf of the county and the city. It's a public agency within the city, and they were pleased on how much they collected from, like, community correction fees, which they've had a really hard time collecting, and so they've had great success for that. And then actually, if somebody wins the lottery, or they have to go in and pick up the money at the office, they can actually, this program's eligible for that, too. You could actually intercept somebody's lottery. Yeah, so. So I think we had three matches on that. So again, just a really efficient and technologically savvy way to collect this type of debt, I think.
I appreciate it. I didn't know this program was around, and so I'm assuming that we will be like third, that any unit will be after them, the child support and the universities that are already using them.
Right, great question. So child support's always first on a debt, and then the state agencies and the universities. So locals are kind of at the end of the line, I'll call it, but it's still been a success. Again, the voluntary payments are just so high. I think in Marion, for entities, I think we officially only intercepted, I'll say, around $300,000, but the voluntary payments were well over $5 million that came in when people got that letter that knew that they had.
And is there a limit on the debt that you wouldn't mess with?
Yes, $25. It has to be at least $25 to submit it.
At least $20.
Right.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, so that's, and that's what Department of Revenue has, and we're actually working with Department of Revenue on their administrative fee to see if there's something we can do to change that from percentage to a dollar amount because, again, it's all software data going back and forth. So, but they do have some expense in working with us and, you know, a little bit of a compliance issue to make sure that we're doing our due diligence on our end.
Our treasurer's here, Mr. Carroll. Would you like to add anything?
Sure.
Was there much training for your staff in terms of community corrections? I don't think there are, here at the bank.
I did check with community corrections, and I checked with the probation department because Dave came up this summer with Jackie Clement, and gave a presentation to Steve and to Ed. And then when he mentioned the community corrections and also the probation user fees, I checked with those departments, and they're very much in favor of it. They want any tool they can get to try and collect the money.
I bet.
Hey, Darrell, fellow branch treasurer. Yeah, we just now with David earlier this summer. We're going to look at the program. We've checked with a couple of other counties, and they have had great success, so we'll probably be coming back to the treasurer's position miss at some point in time.
Very well.
And I did hear you say something about lottery because that's not in this program or could be.
It is.
It is.
It's part of this program, yes. So we had three matches out of Indianapolis or Marion County where somebody won enough from the lottery that they had to go in.
And that's that $600 level that they have to, when they pick up a check maybe?
Well, yeah, I think the lottery is, a lot of the scratch-off tickets, if it's over $600, I think you have to go into the office to pick that up.
Yes.
Yeah, so when they do that, that's when we, that's when they caught the match, so.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
That's great. Thanks so much, and I appreciate AIC stepping forward and being the clearinghouse for us.
And you'll get with us when you're ready to go?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have provided a contract. Dave sent me a contract. I've provided it to all the commissioners. It's just a matter of the departments. The county signs a contract. The departments could then sign up to participate if they so want to. So the commissioners have the contract. I've looked it over. I didn't see anything in the contract other than the big that you charge, that the Department of Revenue charges for their 15% seems a bit much, but other than that, everything seemed to be in order in the contract.
We could adopt it today.
Well, Ed's got to get an account.
You are.
You've got to set up.
Definitely, and adopt it today.
You can adopt the contract today.
I'll make a motion. Will you adopt the contract then?
Adopt the contract.
I will get it to Jenny, to, okay?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And again, if there's any issues that come up, I mean, even though you're going to sign the MOU, if we get to a point and the local agency says, "This is not for me." I mean, it's not like this is a contract where you have to participate.
Right, absolutely.
The MOU just has to be signed to let me know you're interested. And we'll have a series of webinars with all the local agencies. You want to participate throughout October and November to show them how the upload works. But it's a really, a really neat manner, again, it's so technologically savvy. I'm just really impressed with the program we've been able to put together with Revenue.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Next, we'll go to contracts and agreements for approval. The bid acceptance for County Building Washington Street Parking and adjustments.
Commissioners, Flatland Resources reviewed the two quotes we received at the last meeting and recommends that we award to Pride Mark Construction. And I've also had discussions with Charlie Walker. He would like to proceed with alternate A, so we'd like to include that in the bid acceptance.
I'll make a motion. Will you approve the bid by Pride Mark?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we have the agreement between owner and contractor, the building Washington Street Parking adjustments. See the attached contract with Pride Mark.
This is a boilerplate contract that John Burke has used, we've used in the past, and this is with Pride Mark for a not-to-exceed amount of $54,275.
Make a motion. Approve the agreement.
I have a question.
Sure.
The bid was for $9,700. Now, what's the 54?
No, that's the alternate. If we go without alternate.
But we're going with A.
The base bid was like $58,000.
Yeah, $59,051.43.
And if you saw my email I sent to you last week, with going with alternate A, we removed line items seven and eight. So that, as far as we get, the $54,275.
But they still were the cheapest.
They still were.
Okay, second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to department heads and elected officials. Don?
I have prepared findings of fact on three grievances that were from the 901 Center. The first one was Brittany Rowe. I talked with Mr. Retsch at my office that participated in it, looked at these notes, and got a sense from the commissioners as to where they want to go. The, I've shared with you copies of the findings of fact and termination, and they're in writing. Unless you want me, unless you want me to read all this, the bottom line is that the grievance is denied by the commissioners. For Brittany Rowe, this is the one on absenteeism and showing up or not showing up when her shift started. So the commissioners would have, you've seen it all. I've shared with you. I could read it, or you guys can make, take a vote on it and decide if that's what you want to go, or if you want to change it completely, then I could redo it if you want to uphold the agreement, so.
Shannon and I were here to hear it, and I agree with your recommendation.
I'll, I'll second it.
Right?
We have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
I'm going to stand in front of the board.
Then there were two grievances filed by Julie Klein. One grievance was for, I think it's 005, is for a 10-day suspension, and then the second grievance is for termination. Once again, I checked with Mr. Retsch, looked at the notes, got a sense from the commissioners as to how they wish to go forward. I have prepared written findings of fact and final determination, and the bottom line is that with regard to the 10-day suspension, that the grievance will be denied. The second grievance is for termination. The evidence was presented. I checked with the, with Mr. Retsch, got a sense of where that was going, and also that grievance will be denied. So you can vote on them one at a time, or you could vote on them together.
I move that we put them together.
Okay.
Oh, no. Not to the poll.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
I'm going to stand on this vote also.
I will have you guys sign these, and then we'll get a copy to the 901 director and to the union reps. Okay?
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have any other department heads or elected officials? If not, everyone received their report from Ways and Dangers.
I did.
We'll move to payment of claims in the amount of $2,239,994.28.
Move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for payment of claims. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we'll go to public comments.
Mitch Isaacs, 8501 North Yellowstone Drive. But here on behalf of Schaefer Leadership Academy as their executive director, we are working in partnership with Muncie Action Plan and Ball State's Bowen Center for Public Affairs to once again offer our Candidates of the Future program. Wanted to let you know about that because I think we can all agree that democracy is at its best when the most people are engaged and participating, and good leaders think about who's coming next, and we know that you all are good leaders out in the county, so you're probably thinking about who comes after you. You don't want to be a commissioner forever. So if you have people that you Again, nonpartisan, one-day program offered for free at the Innovation Connector.
Well, Mitch, I appreciate you bringing this. Years ago, I did go down to the Bowen Center, oh, some 25, 30 years ago. Never did I think I was going to use it, but I was glad I was there. But I appreciate you coming today because we do need new people and new ideas. Not saying that we don't enjoy it, but we have to look to the future place. We just want people to be ready when their time comes.
Well, I want to thank you, Commissioner Reagan. The rest of you may or may not know, but we were doing an interacting with local government series. We did interacting with city government. Last month, we did county government. Tonight is state government. Most folks just don't know the basics of government, as you well are aware. So Commissioner Reagan has been very supportive of that. She's attended that program. At the county government program last month, she gave us the list of boards because you're always looking for people to fill those board positions. And so with the work we do at Schaefer Leadership Academy, we tend to attract people who are interested and engaged. And so Commissioner Reagan, I shared that list with a number of people who are interested and excited about the opportunities for local boards. And so if you are looking to fill local boards, we do have a wide variety of people from different backgrounds and political opinions who would love to engage, and we'd love to help you because it's our mission to get people involved in the community. So thank you, Commissioner Reagan, for being supportive and helping us in our work. Any other questions or concerns for me about this?
How was the Bridge Festival?
Oh, the Bridge Dinner. The Muncie Bridge Dinner was great. We had about 1,000 people who told us online that they were going to attend. No good way to track that, but we do want to thank you all for being supportive of that program. If you don't know, we closed down the Washington Street Bridge once in the spring and once in the fall, and it's a free public event. And so we had probably a couple hundred people out on Thursday, and food trucks, and beer, and music by Muncie Central, and Dale Bell, and the Ducky Derby from Meridian Health Services, and it's just a good opportunity to celebrate community and have dinner on a bridge that you normally drive over. So appreciate you being supportive of that. I think Commissioner Henry, I think I saw you there.
I was there, yeah. There was a lot of people there.
Yeah. Yeah, great event.
This is Angie Moyer. She takes care of all of our bridges, so if you ever need anything, give her a phone.
Well, we'll let you know. So thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
All right.
So, while you're sitting there, can you motion a recess?
So move.
Sir. All favor say aye.
Aye.
And post. Rest of the session.